Board meeting, I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome, we've had a transition with our school business administrator and now we have a new permanent school business administrator, Ms. Hakisha Taylor. So she's serving as our SBA and our board secretary. Welcome to the Camden City School District, Ms. Taylor. And I will turn it into your hands.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Camden City School District Board of Education, September 24th Public Advisory Board Meeting. The meeting is now called to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the act, the Camden City School District Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published on January 9th, 2024, and posted on the district website at www.camdencityschools.org, published in the board's designated online media outlet newspapers, The Courier-Post and the Philadelphia Inquirer, filed with the Camden City Clerk, and mailed to all persons, if any, who have requested said notice. Please be advised that this meeting is being videotaped and may be broadcasted on local TV and the district's website at a future date. I will now conduct a roll call. Jeanette Alvarez.
Present.
Wanda Garcia. Cameron Hudson. Danielle Jackson.
Present.
Karen Merricks. Vice President Nanamdi Nelson.
Present.
And Maria Perez. You have quorum. The Camden City School Board of Education's Advisory Board Presidency has been vacated due to a resignation. The Board organizes by electing one of its members as president and another one of its members as vice president. Officers shall serve for one year or until their respective successors are elected. Any member may place a member's name in nomination. A second is not required but will be requested. Election for the office of president will be conducted by roll call vote when the nominations for that office are closed. The candidate receiving the votes of a majority of the vote of the full membership of the Board will be elected to office. The term "majority vote" of the full membership of the Board means a majority of all seats on the Board, not just the members present or currently filled. The duties of the president are outlined in District Policy 9121. The floor is now open for nominations for the office of the presidency.
A motion to nominate Nanamdi Nelson as president for school board?
Thank you. Thank you. Are there other nominations for the office of presidency? Hearing none, the nominations for the office of presidency are now closed. I will now take a roll call vote on Nanamdi's presidency. Ms. Alvarez. Yes. Thank you. Ms. Garcia. Mr. Hudson. Ms. Jackson. Ms. Merricks. Vice President Nanamdi. And Ms. Perez. Congratulations. Congratulations to Nanamdi Nelson. He is now the president. We will now, since that vice presidency is vacated, we will now take nominations for the vice presidency. President, would you like to do the honors?
At this time, I'd like to call for a motion to open the floor for nominations for vice president.
I'd like to nominate Jeanette Alvarez for vice president.
Is there a second? Thank you. Are there other nominations for the office of vice presidency? Hearing none, the nominations for the office of vice presidency are now closed. I will now take a roll call vote for Ms. Jeanette Alvarez as the vice president. Ms. Alvarez. Yes. Ms. Garcia. Mr. Hudson. Ms. Jackson. Ms. Merricks. Mr. Nelson. President Nelson and Ms. Perez. Congratulations, Ms. Alvarez. You are now the vice president of the Advisory Board for Camden City School District. At this time, we will ask for a motion to go into closed session. Thank you, Cameron. And we will be discussing... Thank you for the second. We will be discussing attorney-client privileged matters as well as contract negotiations. I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Perfect. We will be in closed session for approximately 30 minutes, returning at around 6:15. Closed and returned to public. Thank you, Mr. Hudson and Ms. Garcia. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? We are now back in public. We will now have the administration of the student oath of office. So if I could please have come to the podium from Eastside, Romelo Mangum. From Camden High School, Sanai Hicks. Yes, give it up. You can meet at the podium. I'll be there shortly. From BPLA, Amaya Fussell. From BRIM, Damian Irizari. And lastly, from Creative Arts, Harmony Bronson. Let's give it up for our student reps. How are you guys doing? If you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Affirm that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of New Jersey and will, to the best of my judgment, skill and ability truthfully, faithfully, diligently and impartially perform the duties of the office of student board representative to the Camden City School District Advisory Board of Education. Congratulations. Let's welcome the student reps. I believe your seats are... Superintendent, where their seats are? Yes, your seats. Please feel free to take your seats. Again, let's give it up for Romelo Mangum, Sanai Hicks, Amaya Fussell, Damian Irizari, and Harmony Bronson.
Thank you, board secretary. And we are so very proud and happy and excited to be able to welcome our student board reps again so that they can share with us the highlights and those things that we need to continuously improve upon to make sure that you have the best education possible. And so at this time, we will allow our student board reps by school, beginning with BRIM School on my far right with Mr. Damian Irizari, to share anything that they would like to share at this time.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I'm Damian Irizari. I'm a senior at BRIM Medical Arts High School. I first want to start off on saying that this year overall has been an improvement from last year. The security team is on it. The administration across all four schools, they're on it as well. I will also say that the eight-period schedule is kind of like half and half. Some students like it, but the students with the CTE programs at BRIM specifically, they feel like missing six periods every Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays is like a lot for them. So that's kind of one issue. Another one would have to be, well, it was an improvement that we don't have, the Bard College collaboration with the AP class. But I will kind of say that it's, I guess, unfortunate that the students had to be used as like, I don't know, like a test. That's how all students feel, especially in that class, because we all received a one in the AP test. So it feels like now, when I'm applying to colleges and I submit my test scores, I have to put additional information and say such and such things. But I shouldn't have to do that. And some students feel like the school system has failed them for that specific class. I also want to say thank you to Ms. Superintendent McCombs for being confident in sending out the letter that she did a couple weeks ago, because that was a lot of courage. And I just want to say it publicly. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Damian.
Hi, good evening. My name is Harmony Bronson. I am student representative for Creative Arts High School. I am also a senior. I would like to say that the changes this year, though it's still early, it seems to be improving. However, for my school, I don't know if it's for the same with the other schools, but for my school, the freshman, sophomore, and junior classes, they had their second period for majors taken out. So now they only have one period. And I feel like with our test scores and like how high... Sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to say this. I feel like with our test scores, yes, we like, you know, some students need to study more, like, of course, that's general. But since we are a performing arts school, I feel like it is kind of unfair for the thing that we actually come to school for, like, besides learning, like, to also learn about our craft and our major, we're being cut short, not migrate, but we're being, the school is being cut short of their time to hone in on their craft. And I just feel like that's really unfair to like all the freshmen, sophomore, and juniors that are experiencing that. Also, the same thing with fundraising. I know we can't really compete with the company that is providing a school lunch, but it's really difficult to fundraise because we basically, I know all the majors basically have to pay for everything themselves. I'm in the choir. Mr. Freddie and Ms. Farmer have to pay for a lot of things themselves. Our students have to come out of pockets. The dance majors paying for their own uniforms. The band getting transportation to go places. The strings with their instruments. It's just a lot that we have to make up on our own. And then especially with this being my senior year, as well as many of the other majors, it's going to be so difficult with all of our senior dues and fundraising for our trips and competitions, the things that we require for our majors separately from our senior classes. So I would just, if there is any way that we can somehow figure out a way to fundraise or like allow selling snacks or just little things, that would be so helpful for us to raise money to provide for all of the majors that have to basically provide for themselves. So, thank you.
Thank you, Harmony.
Hi, my name is Amaya Fussell, and I'm a sophomore at Camden Big Picture Learning Academy. And for, as for the changes in our school, I would like to say that some of them are a little bit extreme, but I feel like they are needed. And they, it is a little bit early, like Harmony said, but I feel like it is working and it is giving us, it is giving, it's getting us to a better place. But there are some things that I want to talk about. For one, funding for Women of the Dream. Now, I am a member, and it is my second to third year in Women of the Dream. And the biggest part about Women of the Dream is the trips, because that is what helps us get out into the real world and talk to people. And it helps us on public speaking and just real-life things that you have to do. And I feel like without funding for that, it will take away a big part of Women of the Dream and what it stands for. My second, my second point I wanted to talk about is the schedule change. Because like she said, I feel as though that A-days and B-days were a very, were, was a very good schedule for us. I feel like it helped us be better in class. It gave us more time to actually grasp what we were learning. Because for me, I'm in all AP classes, and I feel as though it is hard to learn everything that I need to learn in 45 minutes. A-days and B-days, being in a class for an hour was, is better, especially for the, for the teacher to be able to help those kids that need a little bit more one-on-one time. It gives them enough time to do that. And in 45 minutes, you can't get all of that done. And my last point that I wanted to talk about is Camden High's ID situation. Camden High School, they do not have IDs, to my knowledge, or at least most of the students don't. And I don't understand why, because without IDs, you can't get into the bathroom and you need to go to the bathroom. Everybody has to go to the bathroom. But if there's an issue with students themselves, you guys have student records, you can see who's getting in trouble or being too long at the bathroom. But there should be those kids, because it's not everybody. But there should be kids that should be allowed to have their student IDs. But one more point that I wanted to talk about is AP classes and making sure that they're at BPLA, because I know last year they weren't. And I don't know if you guys have fixed that, but I know that some colleges, you need to have AP classes to be able to even apply for the college. So we need to be able to have that at BPLA. So when I graduate, I can go to the college that I want to. Thank you.
Thank you, Amaya.
Good evening. My name is Romelo Mangum. I'm a senior at Eastside High School. Well, I think from a change that, from going to a real high school to back to elementary school is, it's like, it's a big change. I don't really see nothing bad about it, but it's just like, it is so cramped up. Lunchroom and gym all in the same spot. Like, when we get in our lunches, it's all crowded. Like, it's, it's all too close together. I think we need more space for that. And yeah, I just think the school is like really small for all those kids. And that's really it. I just don't like how small the school is for, thank you.
Thank you, Romelo. Thank you.
Hi, hello. My name is Sanai Hicks from Camden High. I'm in 11th grade. So, the good stuff. I personally, I actually agree with Maya about the schedule. Like, I didn't really think about it like that at first, because I was just thinking like lesser periods, the quicker we go home. Which sounds bad. Hold on, not like that. But like, when it's eight, when it was eight periods, I couldn't really get into it, because I knew we were going to be in there for a long time. But, because I've always struggled with math. So now that we have 45 minutes, man, like, I'm really bad at math. And like, I'm realizing that now. So, you know, it is half and half with the schedule. But another thing is about how crowded it is in Camden High, because we have, I think, 500-something students, and there's not a lot of space at all. Like, I'm trying, we're all trying to walk through our classes, and we're all bumping into each other. You can't even, it's very crowded. There's not even enough walking space. You're always late to your classes, because everybody's trying to rush to their classes or they're playing in the hallways. Lunchroom. It would be better if we were a bit more organized in lunch. I can admit that. However, it's still a lot of students for 49 minutes at lunch. Not to mention the fact that we always have last lunch. I've been in Camden High for three years now, and since I've gone there, we've always had the last lunch. First is creative, then BRIM and BPLA, and then Camden High. But Camden High students are a bit more obnoxious. So I think we should get them out the way, and you know, let us have lunch a little bit earlier, and then, you know, the other schools can have their calm lunches, you know. And what else? We have a lot of vacancies, actually. And a lot of core subjects that we really need, there's not enough, there's not teachers. We have subs. Like, my first year, Algebra I, I had a sub the whole year. It was vacancy, whole year. And they had us doing Ingenuity, which in hindsight, okay, that's okay. When I had to do geometry, Mr. Ready, my geometry teacher, he kept telling us like, "Oh, well, if you had geometry, then this would have helped you." And, well, half of us didn't have geometry for the first year of high school. And now we're in Algebra II. And yeah, so it's a lot worse now. And our algebra teacher, he's in for it, because half of us don't even know Algebra I. And what else? Oh, our schedules. We have one guidance counselor. And I understand the other schools also have one guidance counselor, but we have way more students than every other school. And she's doing her best, I'm sure. However, we can't get everyone's schedule changed, because there's always another schedule to change, you know? One, one person, 500-something students, I don't think that really makes sense. Wait, that sounds bad. But yeah, you know? And I think that's it. Okay, yeah, have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you, Sanai. And thank you to all of our student board reps for everything that you have shared. We look forward to being able to continuously work with you and hear from you. We took copious notes, but before I respond, I want to be able to open it up to the board. So I turn it to the board president, just to see if the board members also have any questions. You did an excellent job articulating your points. They're very clear. Some of the statements that you shared, we have responses for. We anticipated that. But there are some areas that you brought up tonight that, of course, we have to go back, because we want to give you an honest answer, not just give you an answer just because we're in the public. But you were absolutely outstanding. Please give our student board reps a round of applause for speaking their truth to all of us. Thank you for your courage. I'll turn it over to the board president.
Sure. Thank you, Superintendent. At this time, I would like to open it up to any board members, if you have any comments.
Thank you, board president. I would like to congratulate you all for stepping up to the plate. You are all leaders. You should be proud of yourselves for, you know, being the voice of your schools. So just thank you. And I'm looking forward to seeing you guys in the meetings every month.
Any other board members?
I just want to say welcome back to those of you who are coming back. Welcome to the ones who are new to the board. I did take notes. You guys will notice I'll take notes at every meeting. Just to make sure I'm understanding you guys correctly. So I'm gonna start with Mr. Irizari. I'll probably go in the order that you guys spoke. Mr. Irizari, so, am I to understand that during the CET process or CTE process, right, you guys were like the pilot, like you said, you kind of felt like the guinea pig. So you guys were the first ones to go through it. So you missed instruction every Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. For how long?
So I'm not in the CTE program. All my friends are. But they miss, specifically for the pharmacy tech program, for Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, they missed the first six periods. So like, they still had their six-period classes, but they had to like remake that work.
Right. So I'm asking, for how long though? How long was the CTE classes? So did they do like the pharmacy tech class for six months? Did they miss every Tuesday, Thursday, and Fri-? You know what I mean? I'm asking, how long was the whole process that they missed all this instruction?
I would, I don't know specifically, but I think it's, I think, I believe it's for the remainder of the year.
Okay. Can we research that for me, just so we can get a, a better answer on that? What else? AP testing, is there nothing, and this is more towards the administration and the superintendent, is there nothing that we can do for those students who all scored the one on their AP exam? Is that just it for them taking that AP exam? Or are we allowed to provide them the services and the support that they need to get them where they belong? Because I do feel like that is a disservice to them, and that's something that they could not help. So if we're not educating them in the areas that we need them to be educated, we can't act like we don't, we don't feel their angst or anxiety by scoring a one all the way across the board for all of them. That, I feel like that's a little bit insane.
So I'm not sure if everyone across the board received a one in their AP classes. However, yes?
I also received a one for my, my AP English, sorry. I also received a one for my AP English class for the Bard program. When I went on, I checked and it was a one. So I just also agree with Damian's point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And so, yes, board member Jackson, we will take a look at what can be done. I'm not sure. So I don't want to give an answer that's not correct, but we can take a look at that to see if there is anything that can be done after the AP exams are taken. To my knowledge, there are not, but I'll collaborate with our curriculum team, just to see if there is anything else that can be done after the tests have been taken.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Bronson?
All right. So, you're, all right. So I'm a Creative Arts alumni, so I'm getting ready to dig all the way into the business, because this is personal. So you're saying, and I'm gonna ask all you guys the same question. So you're saying freshmen, seniors, and juniors have now gone from two periods of instruction of their major to now just one?
Yes.
Okay. I wouldn't have survived Creative Arts with just one period of my major. You know what I mean? And there are students who come in, and this is for everybody, there are students who come in with no training whatsoever, but they have a passion and a heart for what they want to do. So that, that definitely, we need to take a look at that, because that doesn't make sense. Again, I would not have survived four years with one period of my major. It's kind of impossible, you know? You go, you have to get ready for auditions. You have to learn the translations and the language to what it is that you're trying to do. How can I go and take a music class for half, half-
How can I go and take a music class for half, half the time that I need and now I get in this audition and I can't do scales? I can't do any of that because I'm lacking that knowledge. So that is something I would like to take a look at as well.
Thank you so much. And especially, um, I know for my major personally for the, because you're supposed to start learning AP Theory, um, I, I don't remember if it's in sophomore year or in junior year, but, sorry, you're supposed to start learning Theory and then you go to AP Theory and it's so difficult to like take a transition from that when you barely know Vocal as it is. So to learn Theory and then jump straight to AP Theory and for the string majors and for the instrumental majors as well, dancers might not know all of their choreography, creative writing, fashion, like, it's so much that you are missing out of, especially because our periods are now only forty-five minutes. The fact that they are no longer getting two periods, it's like, it's, it's not fair to them.
And then can we find out if this is a policy or if this is just a new rule? Like, is this, is this set in stone across the, for the school entirely or is this something that we can absolutely take a look at since it's only September? No, I'm just saying, can we, can we research that?
Absolutely, and I can give some more details about why we went in that direction.
Gotcha. Thank you. Ms. Fussell?
Okay, let me see. Funding for Women of the Dream. So what I hear you saying is it is instrumental in your instruction. It's something that you absolutely feel is a need.
Yes.
Um, and so in what ways do you guys maybe need some funding assistance? Is it just for, like you said, for trips? Do you guys need supplies? What is it that you need?
Um, there is one more point that I did miss that I do need to talk about before I answer your question.
Yes, ma'am.
He reminded me about Bremen BPLA lunch. We have, we are two schools, that is, uh, nine to twelfth grade times two and one built, and one room that's not as big as this. And that is a lot. And I also feel like lunch is a free period and I understand that they're trying to keep everything on lock, but I feel as though there should be something set up so that way not all of those kids are in that room because we can't all be in that room. Some people don't have seats because there's not enough space for all of us. So I feel like there should be just something in place where, okay, if you don't want to stay in the lunchroom, you can go here and do this activity or do something else because not everybody can stay in that one room.
Thank you, Ms. Fussell. So we want other alternatives to lunch so that you guys are not all cramped in there, two schools at one lunch. And then we also want better alternatives to what you can be doing if you can't fit in the lunchroom, right?
Yes.
Okay. I got your notes. Thank you, Mr. Romello. All right, so I don't have any questions for you, but what I can say is this, it is a process. I will say Camden High had to go through that same process of being squished in over a hatch. It is uncomfortable, but what I can say is take everything you can learn from this situation. And our most uncomfortable moments is where we experience the most growth. So look for the silver lining and what it is that you can kind of do to keep it pushing or to boost the morale of your fellow students. Um, you know, hey, guys, it's only temporary. Hey, y'all, we don't have that much longer to go, you know what I mean? And then also, I guess if we can look for some other alternatives for you guys to maybe do outside of the school or are we utilizing, you know, the, the blacktop? Are we utilizing everything or all of the spaces? So we can kind of look at that, see if maybe some parks are available to be able to walk to or anything like that, but we can definitely look into some other alternatives so you guys don't feel as cramped for such a long period of time. But definitely look for the silver lining. Definitely know that you're not going, okay. Ms. Hicks, I'm almost finished, I promise. Let me, let me finish my last one and then you can jump in, I swear. Um, so you're saying the schedule changes, um, you guys just feeling a little bit overcrowded and it's, it's making you kind of late to classes?
Yes.
Um, I do agree with you on the lunch thing. If you are three years here now and you have had lunch last for three years, I don't think that that is fair. I do believe that lunches should alternate. Um, if we're gonna have all of these schools or four schools on a campus, it has to be fair across the campus and campus-wide. So I think that maybe we can kind of look into that. I'm not sure if we can change that effective however soon, but I do think that we should be able to alternate lunches. I see you got something else to say. Go ahead.
Um, yes, so another thing, sorry, I forgot.
Don't apologize.
Um, we didn't have a classroom for English, well, we didn't have a classroom for English or Spanish, so BPLA was kind enough to give us a classroom on their side. And at first it was Spanish, but then they switched it over and gave Mr. Pescatelli, our English teacher, that room. However, about that, um, BPLA is a little unwelcoming, so to say, because they don't have a guard posted outside the bathroom. And when we first went there, there was a guard standing in that hallway route, which, okay, cool. Now that we're, you know, settled in and they officially gave Camden High that classroom to use, they removed the guard from that hallway. So for the forty-five minutes that we are in that period, we cannot use the bathroom because our English teacher, he can't keep stopping his lesson to run back and forth to open the doors for students who have to use the bathroom and there's no guard posted outside to open the bathroom for us. And about, another thing about BPLA is instead of having us go through the main entrance right here, they have us go all the way around to the back of our school, up the staircase, down the staircase, and down another staircase just to get to our classroom. And we're always five to six minutes late to get to English. And I just think that's very ridiculous because we could get there really fast if we just took the main entrance, but they don't want us to walk around in their hallways because they don't want us to quote-unquote disturb their classes. However, I just think that's really, I just, I don't, I don't like that because last year, even this year, when BPLA has lunch before us and we're in classes, they're running around in our hallways and our teachers aren't really doing anything about that. So it's a problem on both sides because I do think our teachers should be a bit more strict about them running around when we're supposed to be learning. However, they're very strict and unwelcoming about us being on their side, like we want to be over there and it's just a matter of us not having enough classrooms. And there, and now there's not even, we can't even go to the bathroom for the forty-five minutes. Our, our teacher actually told us, he told us that we might not even be able to go to the bathroom because he can't keep stopping the lessons and we might just have to hold it. However, when you get to lunch, sometimes there's not even a guard posted outside, or at least when we have lunch because they're all in the cafeteria with us. So you have to go looking around for the bathroom or if you're lucky enough, Mr. Pescatelli will stop his lesson if we're all reading and he'll open the bathroom for us. But I just think that's very ridiculous. I think they should have a guard posted outside like there was the first couple of times we went there before they moved the guard, you know? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks, and I took notes, so we'll get back to you on some updates for all of that. That's it for me, you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Jackson.
First of all, I, like everyone else, what an excellent job. How lucky the schools are to have you represented. But my question is for Eastside, of course. Um, I just, it's not even a question. I just want to let you know that what a brave young man you are to be here because I know there's struggles that are happening with you guys are so real, but I want you to know that nothing that is done goes unnoticed. I know that you're struggling now, but think about the future of Eastside. Think about what an example you guys as seniors are setting for the other students that are still there. I just hope that once you do graduate that you come back and hold their hands and carry them through the struggles that you guys are gonna encounter this year. So thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you. Any board, other board members?
I just want to say congratulations to all of you. Great job. Keep up the good work and thank you for expressing all your concerns. Thank you, thank you, and keep up the good work. Congratulations.
I want to tell you guys, um, welcome back and congratulations for the ones that's here for the first time. Um, I'm just looking forward to helping you guys with your concerns and issues and, um, I just want to start working with you, anything you might need or whatever. We're here for you. We heard everything you said. You heard what we said and we're ready to like step up to the plate and assist you guys and thanks for coming back.
Thank you.
Uh, I echo everyone else's sentiments, you know, welcoming you and, uh, welcome back and welcome to the, you know, those of you who are new. Um, I think civic engagement is very important and understanding, you know, these different systems and how they work, especially in a, um, uh, city where, you know, uh, voter turnout isn't great. Um, so, you know, these are opportunities for you to educate yourself and exercise your leadership and grow into these roles and set examples for, uh, your peers and just be that voice for them, um, you know, especially those who don't feel comfortable, uh, speaking up for themselves. So I always admire your strength, your courage, um, your, um, you know, your voice. So, you know, any, any way that, you know, we can be helpful, you know, we're here. Thank you.
Thank you, board members. Um, again, thank you, all our student reps. Please continue to speak up and speak out and, uh, we appreciate you. Thanks. I'm turning it back over to Superintendent.
Absolutely. Thank you. And thank you to our board members for the questions that were asked and whatever we don't have an answer for tonight, we'll make sure that we get those answers out so that everyone is aware of where we are. Um, one of the big themes that came up, and I want to respond to you before some of you may have to leave, um, to make sure that you hear, uh, the responses, one of the big themes that came up across several of the schools had to do with schedules. Um, and, and scheduling at the campus, we're in such a, a unique place, right? The vision for this campus was there, for there to be, um, four separate kind of learning community spaces, um, with the national teacher shortage and we're trying to make sure that we minimize the number of substitutes that you do have, even though some of you still have subs. And so, I know, I can't see past you. I'm gonna stand up so I can see your eyes. Um, some, no, it's okay, you don't have to lean over, I'll stand up. Some of you still have subs and that is something that our Division of Talent and Labor Relations has worked diligently on, um, and also has also increased the substitute rate to make sure that we as a district are more attractive to people who want to come and substitute. Um, so we know we're working against a national teacher shortage and other police, other pieces. That's not an excuse. What we've been able to do by making sure that the master schedule at the Camden High Campus is uniform is, and there are implications and we're, we're gonna work through them, um, but is to make sure that, um, the schedules are done in such a way that teachers can be shared across schools if necessary. Um, so that has helped us to minimize the number of substitutes that you have, but it has not eradicated it for the whole. So we know that the tension here is that we have to figure out how to make sure that each and every school still maintains its own identity, um, and is able to still move forward in the way that they have on this campus, just speaking about this campus for now and then I'll go to Eastside, um, and doing so in such a way that we're minimizing the number of subs that we have. So we will continue to go back to the drawing board to figure out how we do this in a way that is not going to, um, we don't want to take away from, um, your experience as students and what you're exposed to. We also don't want you to have so many substitutes and we're dealing with a national teacher shortage. So what I want to say is that, uh, just want to give a few quick pieces of factual information and then we can go back and continue to work through to make sure that everyone, um, is aware of what's been happening. So why did we transition to a straight eight schedule? Um, so last year, there were many concerns and many, um, complaints and some of them came from, um, not only students, but just in general that the periods were too long and, and students, um, were not, um, feeling engaged for the whole time, um, in their classes. That's one reason, but the real reason, as I said before, has to do with just wanting to make sure that we maximize the number of, uh, teachers in front of students and minimize the number of subs. So during the spring, there were multiple meetings with the campus principals here at the Camden High Campus and District Administration to discuss scheduling for the 2024-2025 school year. At that time, there was agreement amongst the entire leadership team that collectively the campus would move to a straight eight scheduling model, which means students have forty-five-minute classes that meet every day with no alternating days. Some factors that were considered included student achievement results, chronic absenteeism, the ability to share teachers, as I said, across the four schools if and when needed, which has helped to ensure that some schools do not have substitutes and vacant positions, the ability to schedule all three lunches without anyone having a split, and students' personal feelings that block courses were too long. So that was something that was shared, as I, I shared before. A deeper analysis included a calculation of instructional minutes and it was determined that the modified block schedule would actually yield one thousand eighty fewer minutes per year. So during the AB schedule, actually yielded less time, less instructional time by one thousand eighty fewer minutes per year. This happens, and I'm, I'm open-minded, I'm not, I'm not closed, this happens because when the block schedule, when, um, this happens because with the block schedule, there are some weeks that classes meet twice and other weeks where classes meet three times. While as a district, we are vigilantly fighting chronic absenteeism and we have made some strides, but our numbers are still too high, it is still a battle. And with block scheduling, if a student is absent two days, they could go a full week without going to all of their classes offered on those days. A traditional schedule affords all students with the opportunity to more easily recover when they are absent, with chronically or simply absent for limited, understandable reasons. The last factor is that when classes run daily, there are simply more opportunities for students and staff to build strong relationships through daily interactions. So for Creative Arts especially, I do want to highlight that students' major Creative Arts courses are still blocked. Also, ninth-grade students whose eighth-grade scores were below grade level proficiency also have two sections of math and two sections of ELA. And sometimes these supplemental courses are blocked back-to-back, which yields ninety minutes. Lastly, the Creative Arts Master Schedule currently has thirteen AP courses, which is excellent. However, as we are now past the first ten days of school, we will review these courses for efficiency and some will be closed with very few or no students. So we want to make sure we're maximizing the opportunity for our students to have AP, um, courses. With regard to, um, Amaya, the concern about AP courses at BPLA, the advisory period, which is, um, a big part of the BPLA model, creates some limitations and there were three AP courses on the master schedule for this year, but we will revisit. Perhaps there are more opportunities for taking courses across the campus like we have done with the Camden, with Camden High and places where there are vacancies. So again, it's difficult when operating a campus like this. We try to individualize student needs, but we also have to consider the complexity of cohabitation, of being in this space together. All this to say that we're gonna go back and look at it, but I do want to make sure that it's clear that decisions were not made in isolation, they were not made in a silo, um, and we rely on our leaders, um, to be able to work with the, um, central office leads in order to make these decisions. But we will, um, as was asked by several board members, go back and take a look at what can be done, um, with, while not, um, totally upending the master schedule, which would not be beneficial, um, at this point. So we're going to take a look at that and this is a work in progress. We'll continue to hear your concerns and continue to, um, figure out what we can do to ensure that everyone is getting, um, what they need. Uh, and so I won't go into detail on a lot of the others, but I do want to make sure, um, that you know for Camden High School, I just want to make sure it's shared with regard to ID badges. Um, ID badges are scheduled to be completed by this Thursday. The machine overheated, I am being told. Uh, next year, we are already planning to move Camden High lunch earlier, but unfortunately we can't change it this year because it would completely upend the whole master schedule. I am, I am sorry personally if you feel unwelcome when you go to any part of this building. I think that was a Camden High student, Sanai, who was talking about going to BPLA and feeling unwelcome. That is not acceptable ever because on this campus, we all strive to, should be striving to make sure that every student feels like they're part of this entire campus. And so we will do some more work. And so we will do some more work with having conversations with those adults who set the tone for our buildings to make sure that no child, regardless of where you are in this building, feels like you're getting in the way of another school. So thank you for sharing that and we will definitely take a look into that as well. BPLA does offer an alternative setting to eat lunch. All students do technically fit in the lunchroom. We are not at capacity, but some students prefer to stand and that's okay. So we will continue to monitor that, but as we have been walking through, it's, it seems that that space is okay. We may need to just modify a little bit more. When it comes to AP classes, Camden Big Picture Learning Academy is offering AP pre-calculus this school year. While we're hoping to offer additional AP English courses, this year, teachers were unable to complete APSI training over the summer due to some personal reasons. So we will be opening up more opportunities there. And so there are some more pieces, again, that we will continue to touch. I won't be redundant and repetitive, but I like to do what I can to make sure you know what, that what you say matters. Fundraising, that was another big piece and then I'll close it out. With regard to fundraising, this is a topic that we've revisited on several occasions with our school nutrition team, so we will take it back again to see what we can do in order to support you. I know that through my discretionary fund and other donors, we try to make sure we can offset the cost of class trips. We sent students to Puerto Rico last year and the string banned and we continuously get donors, but we will also work with our team to see what we can do if we can do anything about fundraising, because I know this is something that comes up each year and there are some restrictions. So I'm going to stop right there, but I want to thank you. This is not the end of the conversation, it's the beginning. Thank you for our Eastside representative. Thank you, thank you, thank you for what you have shared. And as Board Member Jackson shared, hang in there, but we are going to be walking through tomorrow again, so I hope to see you when we're walking through and then we can have a further conversation about some of your concerns as well. Let's give our board reps a round of applause. They gave us a lot to talk about and that is absolutely what this process is about. And so thank you so much. If we spend all our time talking and listening to our students, I'm absolutely fine with that. Thank you. At this time, we will transition into the superintendent's report, so I'll ask our board members to transition to the audience so that we can hear the report. Thank you. Up front and in advance, that the superintendent's report, while I tried to tailor it, it will be a little bit long tonight because there are some carryovers, some statutory requirements that we have to share in public that were not able to be shared last month. And so I apologize in advance, but we do have to make sure that we are in full compliance with what the New Jersey State Department of Education requires. But we are excited about this month. This is National Hispanic Heritage Month and so good evening, everyone. Happy Hispanic Heritage Month and welcome to our September board meeting. As I shared before, we are very excited to celebrate the start of Hispanic Heritage Month, which is celebrated from September 15th through October 15th. This is a time to honor and to recognize the rich culture, the contributions and the achievements of our Hispanic staff, students and families. Throughout this month, we have planned a series of events, activities and educational programs that will not only showcase the incredible achievements of Hispanic Americans, but also provide an opportunity for our entire Camden City School District family to learn and grow together. So I do look forward to sharing with you all the things that have happened in the school district since our last meeting and to bring you, bring you highlights as we prepare to welcome our student, as we have already welcomed our students back to the 24-25 school year. And before we move further, one of the things that we were not able to do last month is to have a moment of silence. There are four individuals from our Camden City School District family who have transitioned and they were beloved. They are Mr. Edward King, Ms. Linda Carter, Mr. Alfred Bentley and one of our students, Mr. Jamal Stewart. Let's have a moment of silence and then I'll just give a brief highlight of each of these beautiful individuals. Thank you. Mr. Edward King has been, had been with the district since September 1st, 2004. 20 years he served as a mechanic electrician and he served the district well. Ms. Linda Carter, her tenure with the district began September 1st, 2000, nearly 24 years. She served in many capacities and her last assignment was as a manager of school safety and she served the students, families and the district with honor. Mr. Alfred Bentley's tenure with the district began January 1st, 2006, 18 and a half years as a custodian C and his entire tenure was spent serving the Veterans Memorial School Family, where he served his district and the staff well. And last but not least, Mr. Jamal Stewart was one of our students who attended an out-of-district placement at Lark School, but was still a CCSD student and he transitioned. And so we honor their legacy and we honor their lives and we will miss them very deeply. As we shift gears and move into the remainder of the agenda, as with all board meetings tonight, we're going to focus on some key topics to highlight during this meeting and you can see them listed on the slide. It's Okay to Be Different Car Show Check Presentation. The Invincible Heroes will be presenting a check in the amount of $7,000 from their It's Okay to Be Different Car Show held in April. These funds are to be designated for use at the Martha F. Wilson Early Childhood Development Center to support autism classes. At this time, I would like to call Ms. Elizabeth Martinez to the podium from It's Okay to Be Different Car Show. You can come this way. Be very careful. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for your time. The Invincible Heroes are excited to be here again for the second year in a row. Seeing the fruits of our labor, last year, we communicated how our enormous car community in one who longs to rebuild its name and I am proud to prove that that is exactly what is happening. Our organization made a goal last year with the It's Okay to Be Different Car Show to help autism schools and classrooms in the Camden School District. As you may remember, many of our members struggle with this disorder in our personal lives and with the autism, autism diagnosis rate getting higher every year. This is the best way we know how to give back to our community. The second annual, annual It's Okay to Be Different Car Show was hosted on Sunday, April 7, 2024, at the Silver Diner. The car show included all-year mix and models of cars, trophies, music, face painting, raffles, teachers and even game bus provided by some of our sponsors. The Invincible Heroes put a lot of time into recruiting sponsors, making raffle items, purchasing trophies and essentials, coordinating the entire event so that it could be enjoyable, family-friendly event. This is something that our car community is happy, willing and ready to do to give back to our community and we intend to continue the It's Okay to Be Different Car Show for the third year this coming April. We encourage you all to come and enjoy this event with us soon. Last year, proceeds in the amount of $11,000 were chosen to be distributed to Forest Hill Elementary School to contribute to their fight with autism. I am proud to announce that this year, proceeds will be distributed to the Martha F. Wilson Early Childhood Development Center in the amount of $7,200 on behalf of the Invincible Heroes Car Community and all of our general sponsors. We want to thank, we want to thank you for all the hard work and dedication you put into our children and helping these tiny superheroes overcome autism. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Can we get a picture together over here? You can feel free to come over. All right. Thank you, Principal Ford, for coming on down. Thank you so much. So you can be in this picture and also I know you're excited to receive this check for your school community. Let's give a round of applause to Principal Rikiya Ford. Again, as I said to them, we are definitely grateful and this is not just the first year that they've done it, so we appreciate their commitment to the children of the Camden City School District. We're going to move into the next portion of our presentation and in order for our students to thrive academically and socially and emotionally from grades pre-K to 12, we must ensure they feel safe and fully included in their learning environment. As a school district, we are required to report to the public twice a year on our Student Safety Data System, or SSDS. Our last midway report was shared in January and this evening I will report on the second half of last school year. Next slide. All public schools in New Jersey, as well as all approved private schools for students with disabilities, must report annually the Student Safety Data System. We must certify that all CCSD schools in the district have reported at the end of each reporting period. And as I shared before, the data we are sharing tonight covers reporting period two that covers January 1st through June 14th, 2024. These reports were combined and submitted to the New Jersey Department of Education Home Room Reporting System this summer. Next slide. Incidents are reported publicly by the New Jersey Department of Education in the following five categories: violence, vandalism, substance offenses, weapons offenses and confirmed HIV harassment, intimidation and bullying. Next slide. This slide shows the total district count for this reporting period and that total count was 53. This slide shows the data by school and category. The blue bar represents the total number of incidents. The red portion shows incidents that were reported as violence. The gold captures vandalism. The green shows substance offenses. The burnt orange represents weapons. The lighter blue highlights other incidents. And again, this will be posted on our website so that if you want to dive deeper into it, you will be able to see it. It will be public on our site. Next slide. And I know this is kind of tiny here, but for the 2023-24 school year, the district had a total of 117 incidents. Incidents include violence, vandalism, substances, weapons and other incidents. Next slide. This slide reflects harassment, intimidation and bullying. During this reporting period, there were 49 district-wide HIV investigations. This chart shows the breakdown of the percentage by school and you will only see those schools, of course, that had reports. Next slide. For the January through June reporting period, 18% of the HIV investigations were founded as harassment, intimidation or bullying. Next slide. Of the 49 HIV investigations, nine were founded. The following charts will provide an overview of the details by school per month. And this is a part of the required reporting. Next slide. While it is small, this monthly information has been presented at each board meeting. It captures the school, the results of the investigation and who conducted the investigation. Next slide. This data from March and April, this is the data from March and April, where there were 14 total investigations, two of which were founded and 12 were unfounded. Next slide. Here is the data for May, there were six investigations, two were founded, four were unfounded. Next slide. And this is the data for June, nine investigations, one founded, five unfounded, three active investigations. The next slide will summarize our totals for the year. So there were a total of, on the next, yes, on this slide, there were a total of 72 HIV investigations during the 23-24 school year. Of the 72 investigations, 11 cases were found to meet the criteria of HIV. So of course, just as important as capturing the incidents is determining how to get in front of them to help our students and to be proactive and vigilant. Annually, all staff members must complete Global Compliance Network training for district-level administrators, district-level anti-bullying coordinator, school-level administrators, school anti-bullying specialists and teachers. Our training is focused in the following areas: anti-bullying Bill of Rights Act, characteristics or needs of individuals or groups at risk for HIV, including those who bully, victims of HIV and bystanders, conflict resolution, cyberbullying, HIV consequences, HIV intervention, HIV preventions, parent involvement in HIV cases, peer relationships or peer social norms, school climate and culture improvement, social norms, social skills relationship improvement and critically and suicide, critically and suicide prevention. Next slide. And again, these are some of the interventions and the programs that are being put in place. So in addition to training, which I detailed on the last slide, we want to highlight some additional programs. I won't read the list to you. Again, they will be posted on our website. Establishing norms, building relationships, the implementation of MTSS, which is our multi-tiered systems of supports or the New Jersey TSS in all schools, the utilization of calming rooms and spaces, mentoring, PBSIS, in-house suspension with restorative practices, dedication to SEL, the initiation of the HERO program, summer bridge opportunities and community partnerships such as the one we have and Amaya let us know the importance of this one with the Women of the Dream and Parent University. Next slide. And addition, in addition to the SSDS data that has just been shared, we are also mandated to share the New Jersey Graduate Proficiency Assessment results based on our spring administration from last year. So our next area of business, again, is to present the results of the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment from the spring. This slide is the overview from the New Jersey Department of Education. To summarize, the New Jersey GEPa is a required graduation assessment. This assessment is given first to all 11th grade students and if students do not meet the cut score, we administer it again to them in the 12th grade. If a grade 12 student missed taking the New Jersey GEPa, they must take it before moving to any other pathway towards graduation. Next slide. The scale scores for NJ GEPa range The scale scores for NJ GEPA range from 650 to 850, with a scale score of 725 as the graduation-ready scale score. Next slide. This slide captures, I'm sorry, this slide compares the percentage of district graduation-ready students by way of the New Jersey GEPA with the state average. Additionally, this slide includes the percentage of students graduation-ready in 2023. In 2024, 34% of our tested students met the minimum score of 725 in ELA, and 8.8% met the minimum scale score in mathematics. Next slide. This slide captures the increase in the number of students who took the New Jersey GEPA. As you can see, in 2023, we had 106 students take the NJ GEPA, and in the spring of 2024, 619 students took the ELA assessment, and 640 took the math assessment. Also, you will see the number of students who met the graduation-ready requirement doubled in both subject areas. In math, the number of students increased from 23 to 53, and in ELA, the number of students doubled in their display of graduation-ready requirements from 106 students to 212 students in ELA. Next slide. This slide displays the number of students who completed the assessment in each high school, as well as compares the average scale score in those schools to the district-average scale score. Next slide. This slide compares the average scale score in mathematics to the district-average scaled Next slide. This slide displays how different subgroups within the district scored as compared with the state and district average in ELA. Next slide. And the subgroup-level comparisons in mathematics is captured on this slide. Next slide. Notable achievements. Our notable achievements for last spring's New Jersey GEPA administration are: one, we increased our participation by more than 140%, and that is to be commended. Our school leaders, our central office team worked together to make sure students were tracked, as well as, excuse me, our attendance team to make sure students were in school. So every, when we have chronic absenteeism and truancy, it impacts everything we do. As students are starting to come to school more and as our chronic absenteeism rates drop, we will continue to see a rise in the number of students taking assessments so that we can get a true assessment of where they are to drive our instruction. Also, the number of students in both subject areas doubled, and we offered the assessment in July to, for the first time, to rising seniors who did not meet the graduation-ready score to give them that other opportunity. And many of our students took advantage of that. And the next slide, so what now what? We know what the scores showed in that one New Jersey GEPA assessment. These are the intervention strategies for all that will be utilized. And the bullets on this slide share some, just some, of our intervention strategies as a district. So we will utilize the NJ GEPA evidence statements for pacing, curriculum developments, and district unit assessments. We will offer monthly professional development centered on differentiation, and we will expand enrollment in our after-school programs. Next slide. Intervention strategies for English. The next two slides, which again, I won't read, pulls out our interventions in ELA, such as creating readiness classes and use of supplemental resources like News ELA and Listen Y, in addition to the other strategies utilized in English that we've already begun. For math, we have similar strategies where teachers will target common assessments to monitor student progress. We will continue to move in the direction of fewer students needing the portfolio process to meet graduation requirements. And now we will go into a few other updates from our, for this month's board meeting. And so, Eastside High School, our student rep from Eastside talked about his experience right now at the Kramer location. So we want to just provide some images of what's happening at Kramer as we continuously work with the staff and principals and students to make sure that their experience is a great one. The first day of school at Eastside High at Kramer was a huge success. As you can see from the slides, our students are engaged. If you take a look at the picture of, there's a young man who's playing his saxophone, you can see how he is playing music for his peers as they wait for their rides after school. And also in that picture, you can see that the outdoor picnic tables, and they have umbrellas up too, but they weren't captured in this slide. The tables are black, the umbrellas are orange, they look very nice. Students are able to eat outside. So that's another space that we're able to allow our students to kind of get out of that small space that our student board rep was talking about in the multipurpose room, which will change once our modular units come in. So this is just a temporary inconvenience for them. Next slide. The Eastside High Physical Education Courses. So turning our attention to this slide, here's a high-level overview of our current physical education courses at Eastside. We have partnered with both the CROCK Center and the city's North Camden Community Center to provide physical education classes to our Eastside High students while we install the kitchen module units, which will free up gym space in their building. Currently, on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, we utilize the CROCK Center space, and on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we utilize the North Camden Community Center. I'm happy to report that after speaking with both of our partners, the city as well as the CROCK Center, they are very pleased with how smoothly our transitions have been. And that's thanks to our staff members, our students. They have just been enjoying these other spaces until they get their new space, and it has been an improvement in many instances for them. Both staff and students arrive and complete their physical education classes as planned, and our own district buses shuttle our students and staff back and forth to and from these locations. Next slide. Eastside High School Construction Project Timeline. Here is a very high-level overview of the Eastside High timeline. Again, this will be posted on our website so that you can see it, but I want to just highlight that by the fall, during the fall of this year, I'm sorry, we will see our modular units for our instructional spaces begin to be installed. We are just waiting on PSENG. They are, they've already been out there. They have their plans, but they just have to put the electrical infrastructure in. And so this fall, we will see some of that transitioning over into some of the other spaces. Again, just a reminder, the new Eastside High School substantial completion is scheduled to be during the summer of 2029. And so just want to continue to remind us of where we've been, where we are, and where we are going. Next slide. Just a few highlights in our teaching and learning section of the board meeting, of our board presentation tonight. It came up with our student board reps, again, I want to say, with regard to our AP College Board Advanced Placement Programming. And so following the announcement of the AP Expansion Grant in June, the district hosted its first AP Student Summer Workshop for students enrolled in AP courses this year. 10 students participated in the two-week program, which focused on building skills like document analysis, Socratic seminars, and test-taking strategies to prepare them for the demands of AP classes. By the end, students reported feeling more confident and better prepared for the upcoming school year, with many expressing interest in future workshops. The grant also enabled the district to expand AP course offerings and provide AP teachers with professional development through College Board's AP Summer Institute. This summer, 16 Advanced Placement teachers received training for new or existing courses. For the 2024-25 school year, the district now offers a total of 27 Advanced Placement courses across its five high schools, including eight new courses. The lineup includes eight Advanced Placement English courses, six Advanced Placement History courses, six Advanced Placement Math courses, three Advanced Placement Science courses, two AP World Language, and two AP Arts courses, with over 170 students enrolled. And we want to continue to push equity in that area as we expand the number of courses as well as the number of students who are able to be exposed to high-level and high-quality instruction in those areas. So we can combat what we heard our students saying before and feeling a lack of preparedness. Next slide. New Jersey GEPA Updates. Again, just another announcement, CCSD Project Graduation, a quick reminder and announcement, Attention to the Class of 2025. All 12th-grade students must take the NJ GEPA to fulfill the graduation assessment requirement. Seniors who have not taken, who have not yet completed one or more components of the NJ GEPA and are expected to graduate with a class of 2025 must take the necessary components during this fall 2024 administration, which will be October 7th through October 18th. Attendance is mandatory for all seniors who still need to meet their graduation requirements. Next slide. The Preliminary SAT and National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, also known as the PSAT. NMSQT season is upon us. As always, we will be participating in the PSAT for grades 9, 10, and 11. The PSAT is an assessment that acts as a baseline for college readiness that allows our district to check in on our students' academic progress. The test will be administered starting on Monday, October 28th, and conclude on Thursday, October 31st. How is the pre-SAT timed? This is a question that we have received. Our ninth graders will be taking the PSAT 8, 9. The test is broken down into 55 minutes for reading, 30 minutes for writing and language arts, and 60 minutes for math. Our students will see about 42 questions for, or tasks for reading, 40 for writing and language arts, and 38 for math. Our 10th and 11th graders will be taking the PSAT MSQT. The test is broken down into 60 minutes, which is allotted for reading, 35 minutes for writing and language arts, and 70 minutes for math. Our students will see about 47 questions or tasks in reading, 44 in writing and language, and 48 in math. And please, parents, how can you help our students prepare? Make sure, our school leadership team will send out a list of topics that will be covered on the PSAT. Please make sure that you have a conversation with your child and read over those topics that will be covered. In addition to this list, each school will also send home test-taking strategies in Spanish and in English with a sample test kit that your child can use to help them prepare for the PSAT. The night before the test, parents make sure, of course, we say it over and over, but make sure that your child gets a good night's sleep, free from distractions. All students are expected to be in school on test day. Please schedule any appointments after school so that your child is present for testing. And students should arrive early on test day to get breakfast and to settle down before testing begins. Any questions or concerns that our families may have about testing or our students, please reach out to our family operations coordinators in each building or our school guidance counselors. Next slide. So what is Rise Academy? After reevaluating both of our alternative education programs, we have decided to combine SOAR Academy and Pride Academy into one program. To ensure that no preference is given to either program and there's equity across, we have named the new program Rise Academy. This combination not only aligns with our commitment to help students overcome obstacles, but it also allows us to be more efficient with staff placements. Rise Academy fosters resilience and creativity and a lifelong love of learning, ensuring that each student is prepared to make meaningful contributions to their community and to the world. We are excited to have launched this program, and as seen in the pictures, our students feel a true sense of belonging. I believe some of the videos capturing our students' experiences have also been posted on our social media pages as well. So it's good to hear from students what their experience is, and we are almost there. Next slide. Professional Development Plan. As we continue to focus on the improvements of teaching and learning, tomorrow, the district will submit our 2024-2025 district-level professional development plan. Each plan will be shared with each school's improvement panel and incorporates school-level PD plans. Our main priorities for this year include building the capacity of teachers and administrators to meet all state-required training requirements, aligning instruction and assessments with the New Jersey SLS, providing quality, inclusive instruction with a focus on equity, tolerance, and diversity, supporting the needs of multilingual learners, providing differentiated instruction, and providing differentiating, differentiated PD opportunities. We will continue to monitor both district and school funds, as well as title funds, to ensure our staff have continuous learning opportunities. Next slide. And there are just a couple of updates from our Division of Talent and Labor Relations Program that are important, that it's important to share with you this evening. CCSD Mentoring Plan. As we welcome students back, we have also welcomed new staff members. Each year, we submit a statement of assurance in New Jersey Home Room that captures our agreement and commitment to new teachers as they gain their standard certification. Our vision with new staff is to support them professionally, academically, socially, and emotionally. We held our new teacher orientation for two days in August, and we will have ongoing sessions with new teachers at the district level. And of course, new staff have daily support in their individual school buildings from their mentors and their colleagues. Next slide. This provides, again, each board meeting, we share a vacancy snapshot. Thus far, 20 teachers, along with 16 power professionals, have started for the 20, for the school year 2024-25. And DTLR is currently working to continue filling teacher vacancies. The team will be attending a number of hiring events, including Rutgers, Newark, and Stockton University fairs. We will also be hosting a virtual event to identify additional candidates for openings and assist with expedited onboarding. The team will be holding interviews throughout September and October in an effort of filling Next slide. And these are, we're ending on a few district highlights. On August 28th, I was joined by Mayor Karstafen, Advisory Board members, and the entire Camden Strong team in preparation for the first day of school. Community members came together to clean up the area surrounding the temporary home of Eastside High, and a big thank you goes out to everyone involved. As you can see, our students were very much excited to be able to be a part of this endeavor, and we just had an overall good time. So we're grateful to the city, to all the volunteers from the many different corporations who came just to give a helping hand, and it was wonderful to see our neighbors who were also glad to see the extra tender-loving care that was placed in their neighborhood. Next slide. And on August 28th, 29th, we hosted our 2024 Back-to-School Kickoff, and it was truly a day of community, with over 50 community resource partners, our 450 Camden School Nutrition Farmers Market participants, and more than 800 families showed up to participate. The event was a huge success, and we are incredibly grateful to all of our partners who helped make this day so special, and indeed, it was. Next slide. These are just some highlights, some photos from the first days of school. We see our beautiful students' faces as they came back together and just were so grateful to be back in school. And it's been a very successful and smooth start of the school year. This next highlight, I want to take a moment to share because as we talk about the national teacher shortage and the vacancies, and we heard our students talk about the impact of having substitutes in their classrooms, our district and our DTLR team, the leadership of our Chief Talent Officer, Ms. Teresa Reese, working with the state and the New Jersey Department of Education, Dr. Anthony Wright, who is also here, and Rowan University really came together to see what we can do about this. So on September 16th, the Camden City School District and Rowan University proudly announced the launch of the inaugural, inaugural the launch of the inaugural, inaugural Teach Camden Program, designed specifically for paraprofessionals aspiring to become certified teachers. This innovative initiative aims to support and advance the careers of dedicated paraprofessionals within the Camden community. The Teach Camden Program offers a unique pathway for paraprofessionals to gain the necessary skills, credentials, and support to transition into teaching roles. By leveraging the expertise of both, expertise of both Camden City School District and Rowan University, the program provides a comprehensive educational experience, including hands-on training, mentoring, and coursework tailored to the needs of future educators. We are excited to launch the Teach Camden Program, which represents a significant step in developing local talent and enhancing educational opportunities in our schools. This not only supports the professional growth of our paraprofessionals, but also strengthens our commitment to providing high quality, quality education to our students. And we look forward to those nineteen paraprofessionals and staff members earning their teaching certificate and being able to teach right here in the city of, in Camden City School District. And so we want to also give a shout out to our CEA, the Camden Education Association, who were very instrumental in helping our paraprofessionals complete the application process and are continuing to, continuing to encourage them to reach the end of this wonderful endeavor. Next slide, save the date. Celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month on October 10, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Dudley School. We are looking forward to seeing you there. And next slide, don't miss out, and for you to ask, as a way for you to stay connected and up to date with all of our daily activities, please follow us on social media. There is a QR code here, and we are also on Facebook and Instagram. So again, just scan the QR code, go to our district website, Facebook, Instagram. There are multiple ways to stay connected with what is happening, in addition to the robo calls and emails that we send out. And so thank you for your attention. I know that was lengthy, but we got it done. We got the business taken care of. At this time, we're going to transition back to the stage and acknowledge our retirees. President Nelson or his designee will do that for us. Thank you for your attention.
I have the presentation for the retirements for, for the 9/24/24 Board Meeting. Michelle Austin, teacher, pre-K, thirteen years and four months. William Collyso, manager, facilities, maintenance, twenty-five years and one month. Joanne Johnson, teacher, Miss English, LAL, twenty-six years and four months. Lydia Nix Booker, paraprofessional A, pre-K, twenty-six years. Congratulations to all.
Thank you. At this time, I will turn it over to our attorney, our general, our interim general counsel, Ms. Ashley Zimmerman, to remind us of the, the rules for public comment.
Thank you. The Camden City School District welcomes the attendance and comments from all members of the public at its meetings. This public comment period is your time to present your comments to the board and superintendent. Each person who signed up to comment will have three minutes to speak. You will be notified when your three minutes are up, and you cannot yield your time to another person. When it is your turn to speak, please come to the podium and address all of your comments to the superintendent or myself, general counsel. Please be courteous to your fellow community members and keep your comments within the timeframe allotted so that everyone has the opportunity to speak. At the end of the three minutes, the microphone will be cut off and we will end your comment. We also request that you please conduct yourself in a respectful manner. The First Amendment is not absolute, and the board can prohibit language that is inappropriate. For anyone whose comments or actions harass, intimidate, or threaten the safety of any person, we will provide you with a warning or immediately end your comment time. We will not interrupt you during your three minutes of comments unless we deem it necessary. If a member of the public speaks about a staff member, interruption may be necessary to caution the speaker of the danger of slander. After the public comment period is closed, the superintendent or her designee will address your questions to the extent provided by the law. So it is my understanding that the first two speakers no longer wish to speak, so we will be starting with speaker number three, Amira Kane.
I got my workout for the week. All right. Good evening. My name is Amira X. Kane, and I'm a proud parent of Camden City School District. As we move forward, it's essential to tighten up the smaller issues to set the tone of excellence within our school district. I want to address the importance of keeping our students mindful of our dress code policy. The other day, I was out giving out informational packets on what educational, educational grooming looks like, and what I observed was a lot of our young girls wearing skirts that fell above their longest fingertip. And if they bent over, they would expose their entire backside. I also observed many cars going by, beeping at them, catcalling, and that's just not really safe, especially now that we're in the fall season. It's about to get dark soon. We have late buses. We just want to make sure that our students are protected once they get out of school and on their way home. It's, it's really about bridging the gap between school and home for me. So it's important to promote respect and focus on learning while in school as well, and how our students present themselves plays a crucial role in this. I believe that every student has the right to express themselves creatively and uniquely. However, I want to be sure that we protect them and ensure their best interests are prioritized. With this matter and any other matters, it's going to take responsible adults in our community to step up to the plate and to support our students in every aspect when they're in school. So, and then I also, also want to emphasize that our district prides our students who embrace sports and arts, and I feel like creating programs that will also foster and instill self-confidence and, and high self-esteem in our students is also necessary. So if we can create some type of programming with school-based services that can, you know, put mentorship back into our students in that level, that would be appreciated. So, and then I also have two questions. I'd like to know if there has been any training for our educators when recognizing or that it will help them to recognize educational grooming, and if there's a vehicle or some type of system that we have where they can report that if they do see it. Then I also want to see, background checks as well, that's also on my list. But one last thing is, is there an initiative in our schools for students to report anonymously any cases of grooming that they may see or sexual harassment from a staff or student? What is that, and how are we being proactive in the school when calling things like that out? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is speaker number four, Josie.
Good evening, everyone here tonight. For the new board members, my name is Josie Ocasio from Parents Invincible. Let me share with you a little of what we do and hope that we can work together and create a good relationship to help serve our students and parents throughout the district schools. Parents Invincible represents parents across the city regardless of school type. We ensure that they access to, they have access to resources and information required to make the best choices for their child or children. We build relationships with school officials and encourage parents to be active and very engaged with their students and schools. We also encourage parents to advocate and voice concerns or accomplishments for their child and help others do the same. On another note, we have always encouraged parents to come to board meetings. If they cannot attend, to email their testimonies. The form, the form to email testimonies hasn't been updated since April, and so no testimonies can be submitted. I'm not sure where an update for the new process of submissions can be found on how parents are informed about the new updates since then. If our testimonies are being read by board members, can they or we at least receive an email or call with feedback or follow-up procedures on issues addressed? Many parents we encourage to speak or write in have not followed up with, with, about their concerns. I hope we can collaborate and focus on what's important for all students to achieve at the top. Thank you all for your time, and please contact me at any time.
Thank you. Next up is speaker number five, Gabby Gonzalez, and on deck is speaker number six, Karen Borelli-Luke.
Good evening, Superintendent and Advisory Board Members. As we embark this new, exciting school year, I wanted to also take a moment and introduce myself. My name is Gably Gonzalez. I am also a community outreach organizer with Parents Invincible, a nonprofit organization that's dedicated to advocating for parents and students in our wonderful city of Camden. I am thrilled to be here with you as we kick off another year filled with potential and promises. Our mission is to foster strong connections between students, parents, and the community. We conduct community outreach, make calls to encourage participation in school events, and provide valuable resources to support our families. We are eager to work collaboratively with schools to create impactful opportunities for our students. I encourage each of you to reach out to us as we are here to also support you guys as staff, as we recognize that you guys also play a huge role in our students' lives. And you guys can always reach out to us. We are here to also support the staffs in the schools and also the parents as we believe that our schools is our children's second home. And it does take a village to raise a child, and so we're here to help not only our parents and students, but also everyone that takes a part of their education.
Thank you. Ms. Luke is up next, and on deck is Mr. Delgado, speaker number seven.
Good evening. Karen Borelli-Luke, teacher, Camden City. First thing to address, under Superintendent's Report, it said, "Initiate the sale of Caddo School." I believe it's under the wrong address. I believe you have 3100 Westfield when it should read 2930 Saunders Street, unless you're selling the new Caddo School. I don't know, but it was under the Superintendent's Report. The other thing was, I addressed last board meeting in August about the stipends to be amended for Camden High School. You amended it not once, but twice, and it's still wrong, and it should be according to our contract. It'll just open up the contract and read what the stipends say. You'll see the proper amounts. It's still not correct. And speaking of the new contract, we would greatly appreciate if sitting, after sitting on the negotiations team, going back and forth, I know we're just waiting for a few things, but if CCSD could get their act together and work a little bit quicker, more efficiently, we can get our members together and we can ratify that contract, but we're still working with no contract. So, I would like to see that happen. Also, bringing up the phys ed, you know, you said that until they can move the stuff out of that space where they're eating now that we can have phys ed, there's no way phys ed can happen in that space that they're eating, that's barely that they're eating in that space. But what would I know? I just have forty-one years as a phys ed teacher. Speaking of also the bilingual resources for Eastside, for the staff and the students, I think there could be better support systems in place for the teachers, and it should be better than just getting by. It should be so that those students have what's equal to everybody else to educate and empower them the same as every student. I believe we can also get the community more involved to assist with the bilingual students as well. We need to utilize what we have in our communities and among our staff. We have better skill sets that we can utilize instead of just, you know, putting our personal agendas out there and, you know, putting people that don't have a clue. You know, I think it's better, those coined phrases, "Follow the money, connect the dots" has never been more true than it is today with CCSD. Thank you.
Good evening, Jose Delgado. First of all, I want to, for, for your help, you're not a public body. The Advisory Board is not a public body, as defined by the Open Public Meetings Act, just to let you know. A couple, about a week, week and a half ago, I, I decided to put on my ex-Board of Education Member hat, and so I Oprah'd, requested documents from the district. I requested a certificate of occupancy for Kermit School. As you know, people come in and they, they evaluate the school and they give you a certificate of occupancy. I asked for a certificate that it meets the American Disabilities Act, the state certification, the Department of Education, whether the, it has the ability to provide a secondary curriculum, educational curriculum, and also I asked for the contract for the Crocs Center. I received some papers that did not provide any of that. Obviously, what it means, means to me is that you have no certificate of occupancy. There's no report, even in the documents you did provide. There is no evidence that the farm marshal came in. There is no evidence that there was any kind of investigation for lead paint for the water. There was none, none of that done in this particular case. The Health Department did a preliminary pre-test. In other words, the kitchen had not been certified. All of those things should be done before a child puts their foot into the door. Based on the information that I received from Ms. Zimmerman, the attorney, none of those certificates and documents have been provided. They don't exist, because I don't think she would not give them to me. The other problem is, you have kids in the basement without a secondary exit. If something happens down there, there's only one way in and one way out. The ES, English Language Learners do not have sufficient books, and the resources for them are very, very bad. Thirty, about a third of the students in that school are, are English Language Learners. The resources in that school are horrendous. Just as one of the students pointed out, the school is too small. The bathroom in there is like one-third the size of the bathroom at Camden High. You've got two bathrooms on each floor, I mean, one bathroom in each floor. They're about a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred square feet. That's all you have. You've got big boys in there. I don't know how they do it. The situation that we have at Eastside High School was created, but the students are paying the price. the price.
Thank you. Up next is Alicia Falcon, Speaker number eight, and on deck is Ms. Vida Neal.
Hi, school member, school board members and Superintendent. Congratulations to the new president and vice president. My name is Alicia Figueroa Falcon, and I am the Executive Director of Parents Invincible, and I'm just looking to positive trajectory for this new school year. I'm a product of Camden City School District. The reality is that the Camden City Schools have amazing educators followed by a very family-oriented community. Those two aspects were probably the only reasons I made it to college. The harsh truth is that academically, I was underprepared for college. This caused me a lot of depression, always feeling lost, not able to connect with other students, and ultimately led to me dropping out. I did go back. I spent countless hours in tutoring, worked multiple jobs, and became a graduate, but I had to work three times my classmates. I'm here because I don't want that for our students now. I want them to experience college like they deserve. What's important here is that we identify that our kids are still underperforming in comparison with surrounding counties. They are still incarcerated at a higher rate, and they face adversity that no children should face. Even though there have been improvements, we still have a long way to go. I say this all to say, we are here to work together to make things better. On average, Parents Invincible connects with over 10,000 parents a year. We phone bank, canvass, survey, and host Resource Fair. We run research to find solutions, and we're here to, and we hope to hear, I'm sorry, and we hope to be able to share these resources with the district as well. I wanted to note that the child mentioned the AP classes, how they were receiving ones. So, to get college credits for any university, you have to have at least a three on the AP exam. That's most schools, but schools like Rutgers-Chamden, it's a four. So, a one is basically, they took that class essentially for nothing. That time could have been spent on something else, and that's unfortunate. For me, I made, I took, I had a two, and that didn't translate to me being college-ready. It translated to me being underprepared for college and having to take zero credit courses just to get to the same level as everybody else. So, it was unfortunate to hear that still 10 years later, students are still facing the same issues with these AP courses. Just a recommendation, I know that a lot of colleges and universities are willing to partner with our school district, and I think that maybe those classes should be taught by college professors and not the high school teachers, just a point of recommendation. And last but not least, we just want to be here to support you in any way that we can, so if that means helping you guys research, connecting with parents, to survey them, to see what are the biggest issues impacting them, because school really starts at home, and if home is not 100%, that's not going to translate into education. So, we're just here to support. Shared a little bit of my testimony just to, so you guys can know what kind of drives our passion towards the students in the city. So, I hope to connect with you more.
Thank you. Up next is Vida Neal, and on deck is Ms. Divine, Speaker number 11.
Good evening, Board Members. Superintendent McCombs. My problem with this board is, is functioning the same way the last board did, under new leadership. I want to say that, I don't know how Jeanette could be the vice president when she's missed at least four meetings. She should have been voted off, just like Wassim. Cameron, you missed four meetings. You should be voted off. All of yous are taking money from Camden Educational Fund to fund your campaign against the citizens, and we wonder why we can't get normal people in here that know about education? Now, I want to know each one of your educational levels, and don't tell me nothing about where you want, because I went to a college too, but I didn't graduate. I want to know what degree levels each and every one of you have on this here day, because I believe that not only do you not have degrees, you don't live in Camden, Jeanette. You're not a Camden resident. A whole lot of yous are not Camden residents, and you're doing a disservice to education, a disservice to our children, and you should not be here. Let your conscience be your guide. Youse people are empty vessels. You don't care about education. And another thing, why send the student reps out? They might point out some of the dumb stuff that y'all doing while they're here. Why send them out? It's not because of our behavior, it's because you don't want them to hear what you're doing. It's important that our student reps stay for the duration of the meeting. And while Ms. Ryan was strolling down the street, when I see people on top of the roof trying to fix the air conditioner, it don't shut off, it's broke. It's time for the heat. That's why we all up in here, we're people of color, we don't need all this air. Get the air conditioner fixed while we're in here. That is emergency. And if there's any classrooms where the kids are freezing like this, I feel sorry for them to have to sit 45 minutes to an hour. And another thing, one major? What college are they gonna go to with one major? Are you in business to educate our children or de-educate them? I had to have four majors before, four majors for four years. What is this malarkey youse people are doing with education for our children? What are you doing? You sat up here and told a story about when you wanted creative arts or whatever, but what you didn't, didn't tell them is, you didn't want through what they're going through now. Start telling them about hopes and dreams and all that. Well, you know what? I hope and I dream that every last one of yous get off this board. We don't need a board. We don't need an advisory board. You are not working for the citizen. Jeanette, you were the state representative to this aide or something, wasn't you?
Ms. Neal on the end.
I could tie you right into Norcross.
To either myself, the president, or...
Well, didn't I ask y'all not to speak when I speak?
Hi, hello? I'm not sure. Hello? Hi, everyone. My name is Ahava Divine. I am a parent of a student at Forest Hill Elementary. When my daughter started school in September, she was in a classroom of 16 students. I received a letter Friday that not only is her class being changed, I did not meet the teacher who she was going to be seeing, and when I went in there today to look at the classroom, there are over 20 children in a small classroom. Not only is there about 24 to 25 kids, they all are on different levels, and the teacher has been removed from the class. As, as an educator who is pursuing a doctoral degree right now in environmental designs in education, not only is that an issue when it comes to the students, but the stress that the teachers are going to experience is not healthy for the students or the administrators. Not only that, I'm also a part of the PEC at Forest Hill. None of us were informed about any changes that was going to be happening at Forest Hill, and I am a very active parent at Forest Hill. I would like for us to come to some type of medium where we are informed of these changes and get a say in what is happening. That is all I wanted to say, and I would like to see if there's any way I can get more information on why the fourth grade classrooms are being joined together, why the teachers have been dismissed, and also, it was projected that Forest Hill will only have 280 kids that was going to be enrolled, and they suppressed that by 60. There are 300 and about 40 kids. So, how are we looking to address the need for the new students that are coming there? And one more thing, I'm aware that Forest Hill is a community school, so with this two classrooms in fourth grade now having 24 kids, that means they can't take in any more students who may transfer.
Thank you. Up next is Jose Delgado. There were two Delgados signed up. This is, he left. All right. Next up is Speaker number 14, Rancha, I can't read, Dickerson, my apologies. And on deck is Mercedes Hayes.
All right, Rancha Dickerson, Camden residence. Let's get into some things, what have questions about. Number one, the new BA, Ms. Walker, was her job posted, and did she interview? There's been a very inconsistent position, and we want to know why this position is always being moved around, but also the process of having a new BA. We want to find out, we need answers if she interviewed and was that job posted before she received the job. Second thing is, can you give, can you confirm that Board Member Naima Gillespie has resigned? Because that has not been made public. So, that's another vacancy we have on the school board. This other thing about the scheduling issue at, on this campus, the parents were not notified. So, I get it Superintendent, that you are addressing how you are trying to solve it, but you never, y'all never sent anything out to a parent, because I'm a parent in this school, and I never knew about it. So, that's one, that's a huge problem. Secondly, you all have to take accountability of what you did to this campus. You ruined this campus, and now you are making the students pay for it, and the students and the school should have autonomy of how they build their schedules. So, you have to address that in a different way, and please do not take our advancement placement classes, because our children need to get full rides for academics as well as sports. So, before you start rendering a decision, let us make sure that, number one, we are taking accountability for what we did by stuffing four high schools on one campus, and then, secondly, not informing the parents about what was going on in the school, and consider, at an art school, you do need more time to do your majors. So, that's that part. So, I want, I wanted the questions to that. And then, the last thing I want to ask, you all have comments to the children, but when's the last time you visited one of these school's board members? Like, not, not, not for a political invite, but really coming to the school to visit. You gotta be in here to see what these kids are going through. Like, come up to the school, y'all got carte blanche. Come up here and visit the school. Now, let's get into the policy part. First to be talking about is CUSAC. Now, everyone knows that CUSAC is the Quality Single Accountability Continuum. The NJ Department of Education is the grading performance for all New Jersey public schools. It's the way to keep their foot on our neck. Camden has been under CUSAC for many years now. There was that report done back in October. The four areas, fiscal, 87%, operation, 75%, instruction and program, and remember it is 61%, governance, 94%, and personnel, 81%. We're supposed to stay above an 80, 80 or above. There was not, where's the last report from the Superintendent about CUSAC? CUSAC is what's holding us under local control. We do not have, I'm sorry, it's holding us under state control. If we deal with CUSAC, we can get rid of the advisory, we can get rid of the corruption, we can get rid of the non-democracy, we can get rid of all those things if we address CUSAC. Last thing I say real fast is, what money was put towards ex-president Mohammed's fees? We are in debt 800K. What took, y'all took money out of the operation budget? We want to know an itemized report about how much money was taken from our programs, and that's all the time I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Hayes, you're up next, and on deck is Elizabeth Martinez. Mercedes Hayes.
She left.
She left, okay. Okay, Ms. Fussell, number 17. And on deck is Janelle McGray.
Good evening, everyone. Board Members, Superintendent McCombs, it's a lot of you people in here that I know. I am Monifa Fussell. I am Amaya Fussell's mother. You're, one of your advisories from BPLA. I have questions, I have concerns. I am a lifelong citizen of the city of Camden, and this whole four, four schools in one campus, it scares me, scares me ridiculously. I am now an employee here at Camden High School now. I am the new lunch lady, and I want to tell you that BPLA, BRIM, Creative Arts, lunch is wonderful with them. Camden High School is out of control. Out of control, absolutely out of control. Loud, obnoxious, rude, don't want to follow instructions, just, you know, little things that make lunch inconvenient for them as well as for the employees. My main concern is that 45-minute classroom time. My daughter and I had a conversation last night, and she said to me, "I don't know how I'm going to do this, Mom." I said, "What's wrong?" She says, "We have 45 minutes to learn, and it takes 20 minutes for the entire class to settle down." And this is her geometry class, Mr. Nagusay. I love Mr. Nagusay. Mr. Nagusay is a very nice man. He is from Eritrea, if I'm not mistaken. He has a very thick accent, so a lot of the kids are not paying attention. I don't know if we need to get more security in the school, I don't know if we need to get security in the classrooms. However, I do know that if 20 minutes is being taken away from them for learning, from their learning time, how are they going to learn effectively? In turn, how are they going to be able to complete the things that they need to complete to get further than a one on this, this test that they're getting, that they have to take? A suggestion was made to me and to my daughter, if there's not a resolution for this simple problem, that she should go to another school. I have been a parent for 31 years. I have a daughter who graduated from Moorestown Friends. That was what was put on, that was what was suggested to myself and my child. I graduated from Camden High School in 1992. We were the first freshman class to have an overnight trip. This can be resolved. If we were able to take that trip and we were able to be the band that went to London, this can be resolved. I'm absolutely positive of it. I need for parents to be more active in their kids' lives. A lot, a lot, a lot of parents need to be more active. I'm the lunch lady. I do the late breakfast.
Thank you. Up next is Janelle McGray, and then on deck is Theo Spencer.
Good evening, Board. First and foremost, it's a welcome sight and thought to see the stage as it is this evening in comparison to our last meeting. However, I am concerned about the appointment of leadership. As a citizen who comes to the board meetings and realizes who's here and who's not, it's kind of disheartening when you appoint people who don't show up. For those who truly been in this movement for some time, this behavior is what was the catalyst to why we ended up under state control. For those who have been around in this district for more than 20 years, as myself has been, when board meetings were meeting down at Front and Cooper, we had board members who just said they weren't coming. And to see that kind of behavior still exists decades later, and to know that these people are the same ones whose seats are up and are running under, running for a nonpartisan position, but everybody has the same email address at info@camdemocraticcommittee.org, that's kind of shady if we, if we can all think about it. Ms. Dickerson already addressed CUSAC for me. As an educator who was in this district for over a decade, I've watched students learn, I've watched students grow, and these numbers that I see on the screen are truly disheartening, especially when we should be able to know the difference between then and then. You know, when you see things like that come across in an educational forum, it's disheartening to the community, it's disheartening to know that our students are sent out of here because they do need to hear what the community has to say and how we support them, because we do understand, we listen to our students, we listen to our children, and they should have been here. This portion should have been available for them to be here to understand that they do have community backing them. In regards to the substitute situation, when I look up the word substitute, it says "a person or thing acting or serving in the place of another." When we... When we think about all the classes that have substitutes, fifteen years ago, I got before this board and I said, "There's no reason for us to have four separate schools. If our schools was combined as one school, first and foremost, students would learn from one another. All these behavioral issues that you have put in one area will probably be decreased and you will probably have the teacher capacity in order to make sure that each and every one of our students learn."
Thank you. Up next is Theo Spencer, speaker number nineteen. And on deck is Ms. Craig, speaker number twenty. Ms. Craig. And on deck is Tracy Medley.
Hello to all of you. I am a parent of a dance major at the Creative Arts School. I want to address a few issues. My first one is concerning her schedule as it has been changed three times. So not only has it been changed three times, they have now reduced the time for majors. Not only that, the Dance Department assumes one hundred percent responsibility for the finances of the enrichment of the production and the performances. This is the only department that assumes one hundred percent responsibility, which to me shows that we feel that this department is less important than all the rest of the departments. I have talked to a lot of the young girls and the gentlemen in this department and they have all basically told me that this department serves as an outlet, a safe space, and a place of creative expression. They come from all over New Jersey. This is not just young girls and boys coming from Camden. They come from Clementon, they come from Blackwood, they come from Bellmore. They are needing a creative outlet. This is one of the only locations in the, in the New Jersey area that gives opportunity for Creative Arts majors. I feel that this should be poured into a little bit more. My child was relocated not once but twice. She was in Creative Arts, actually in the middle school when it was located on Morgan Boulevard, removed out of that and placed into a regular middle school because it became a high school, then crammed into this school with three other schools just to be told that she would only have forty-five minutes for class and then get points taken off when they get, can't get to class on time because the hallways are too squish. These girls and this young gentleman have to take their clothes off, put their clothes on and still try to get to class with no grace period and then suffer five points off for being late. It's unfair. I feel that this decision to downsize has limited other children who would want to be a student here at Creative Arts. It reduces the amount of seats. So now we have a limited amount of people able to even come to this school because it is so small and now they can't explore that passion. A lot of us parents and students feel that it is very necessary for a bigger location and that's just the bottom line. We need more space. My hope is that we find a solution, that we can help support them, that we can fund, that we can give more of our time voluntarily. I am heavily involved in my child's academics and her, her performances. I give my time, I give my money, I give my resources and I think that that is just unfair for all of these students. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Tracy Medley and our last speaker will be Samir Nichols.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Tracy Medley, Millennium Skate World. We're located at nineteen hundred Carmen Street, Camden, New Jersey. In December, it'll be twenty-four years that we've been here. We have a wonderful STEM program, thank you all. Well, our STEM program ties in math and science with roller skating and we encourage the Camden schools to be able to come out and support our program. It's a daytime school trip. Some of the lessons that we offer is the science of roller skating, motion and skate design, music, math and roller skating, super sound acoustics, the science of lighting.
It's our invited to participate in the District Parent Advisory Council meeting. The next meeting will be held on October seventeenth at HB Wilson from four to six. Each school also has parent meetings throughout the month, so that's just another way to, to be able to stay involved, but we hear you loud and clear and we will be looking into those areas as well. Ms. Craig, Dance funding is supplemented via the Perkins, via Perkins funding. Resources have been purchased for the program and we will examine the district budget for equity and opportunities to provide more to the Dance Program and all of our programs that support our amazing learners. Mr. Nichols, if you're still here, thank you so much for your offer and we will be in touch to have more conversations in that area. I may have missed a few, but I tried to take the notes that I could. I'm not sure, hold one moment. Yes, Samir Nichols, I'm sorry, yes. I thought I addressed that, but I think maybe I did not. But Mr. Nichols, thank you for what you shared with us and for offering your resources. Please connect with Principal Brockington and also Ms. Tanya Wilson, who's the Senior Lead Educator who supports health and PE, so that we can figure out how to get that arts roundtable definitely in place. And there was a question and my last point before turning it over to the Board President to take questions and comments from the Board with regard to our student board reps and why they're not here. So it's always been our practice, it's not new, to make sure that our student board reps are able to be dismissed and get home to prepare for the next day. And some of them have other things that they need to take care of, so we didn't do anything that we haven't done in the past. And we'll talk to our board reps to see if they want to stay, it's no problem, but typically they have to leave. So we did not dismiss them. We just want to make sure that they get home and get ready for the next day, et cetera. But thank you for, for that feedback. We'll take it into consideration. I'll turn it over now to our Board President, who will take any comments from the Board.
Thank you, Superintendent. At this time, I would like to open it up to any board members that have comments. I will start with Board Member Jackson.
Thank you, President Nelson. Same way I did with the kids, I kind of took notes on what everybody was saying and so I have some feedback. Ms. Kane, Amira, I heard what you said about the dress code policy and different things like that. What stuck out to me though was the first day of school, you all passing out your literature. It's not a problem that you're passing out literature. The kids should be informed, but there is a way to go about it. It's sensitive content. Rape whistles are a sensitive thing to be passing out to students. And I am a parent of a student at this campus. I didn't get a notification saying, "Hey, I wanted to talk to you guys about giving your kids some information." So just be aware of, you can pass out information, what you're given is knowledgeable, but there's a way to go about doing it. Not saying that you can't, it can just be done a little bit better. Josie, Gabby and Alicia, Parents Invincible.
I just wanted to thank the ladies from Parents Invincible for all of their support that they give to our parents, our students and to our administration. From there, Karen Barelli-Luke, who it seems has left. What I will say is, Ms. Luke, I will say it again, I've said it before, but you don't come from a school that has always had a gym. And so in situations like this, we have to learn to adjust. You've only had a gym at Camden High for what, three years? BRIM has never had a gym. It didn't have a gym at the old site. So we can, I think that we can make some adjustments and be okay with being bussed to the CROCK Center and having all our alternatives. We can't keep beating the same drum and this is every meeting for the past almost year. That's all I had to say about that. Ms. Neal, I took notes on a lot of what she said. The board function in a different way. What degree level do any of us have? Are we Camden residents? Are you? Let's be very clear. We can't keep coming in here and expecting our board not to be human. You can't, listen, you, you give it and you get it the way that you guys give it and we have been taken a lot since January. It's a hard thing to walk into this room and we hear that, we hope your kid gets touched next. Let's be very clear, you all have been just as disrespectful and I have said nothing. So, so today, I'mma say it now. I'mma say it now. Is it narcissistic or am I speaking my truth?
Board Member Jackson. Board Member Jackson.
Understood, but I won't be into any of it.
Yeah, but it's not to go back and forth, so.
Moving along.
If we could stop for a second.
Ms. Devine, we heard what you said. Superintendent McCombs absolutely responded to you about the twenty-three student limit. Ms. Tracy, before you go, I absolutely love what you guys are doing with the STEM program. I did want to kind of catch you before you left. I would love, love, love to hear more about that. Thank you. Ms. Rasha, I absolutely loved your questions. I absolutely loved your questions and there are also some questions that I would like to know as well, so we're going to keep you posted on some of that. Ms. Fussell, welcome as a new lunch lady here at Camden High. We are glad to have you. It's, it's very rare that we see parents who want to be active in working with the district as well as being an active parent in the district. So kudos to you for being willing to step up and fill in the gaps where you see needed. What else? I think that was pretty much it. Mr. Nichols, thank you for offering those wonderful alternatives. We look forward to hearing from you and all that you have to offer as far as Creative Arts and how to bridge the gap for some of that funding. Thank you. For the district, absolutely. So thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Jackson. Are there any other board members that would like to say anything? All right, so I'll just take a minute, thank you for everybody that has come out. Also want to say thank you to the Superintendent and her administration during challenging times, keeping the main thing, the main thing, which is our young adults, staying focused. I want to say thank you to all the parents, all the community members, all the guardians who have come out. I encourage you to continue to come out. There's nothing that we can do alone. It takes a collective effort. We may not always agree on everything, but I think when we are able to communicate with one another respectfully, a lot more gets done. Again, I want to reopen the door to open lines of communication. If we are putting students first, the only way it works is if we can communicate with one another. So again, some people may not agree and that's okay, but how do we effectively move forward? That's something that's important and it's okay. Everybody has their opinions, but if we are being the example for our young adults, then we'll lead by example. And I can say that you have a committed board up here that's willing to work as long as they're here. I also want to say, there was a question about whether Board Member Gillespie has actually resigned and I will say she has resigned and I would like to take an opportunity to publicly thank her for all of her services. If we could give her a round of applause even though she may not be present. It is not an easy task to always serve and there's a lot of things that we don't always see and work that's done that's not always exposed. So I thank everybody for their hard work and a lot of people bring a lot of things to our district and we want to continue to work together as a united front. And how we move forward to accomplish those things, especially during challenging times, truly shows our strength. And at the end of the day, actions speak louder than words. So please hold us to those actions. You know, call us out, work together with us, but I ask you to call us out in a respectful manner and in a way that you would also want to be spoken to as well. So on that note, again, I say thank you. I think, thank you to everyone who does the work. Again, congratulations to Jeanette. Thank you to all our board members. Thank you Superintendent and all your staff and we're looking forward to a great school year. At this time, I'll turn it back over to the Superintendent.
Board President, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I would like to begin by congratulating you as President and also thank you for stepping up to the plate as Acting President. You've done a phenomenal job and you should be proud of yourself. We are all grateful for everything that you've done. I also would like to extend my heartfelt appreciation to my fellow board members for the trust and support that you've bestowed upon me as I take this role as Vice President. I want you all to know that I don't take this position lightly. I understand that it comes with a lot, but we have an amazing team up here. We're very dedicated and I thank you all for this opportunity and have a blessed night.
I'd like to turn it back over to you Superintendent, thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to the Board Secretary to present the agenda items.
Thank you Superintendent McCombs. There is one walk-in item, which is the resignation of Board Member Gillespie. I will read it into your hearing. Therefore, be it resolved that the CCSD Board of Education, with regret, accept the resignation of Board Member Naima Gillespie effective on Monday, September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. So that is a walk-in item added to the agenda. And with that, as the new business administrator, I see here that the, I am to present the agenda items and ask, ask if there are any questions. And luckily, I have Peg sitting behind me to assist, so if there are any questions as it relates to any board agenda items, please feel free to share.
Are there any board members that have any questions? No questions, thank you.
Thank you. I now turn the meeting.
Which focuses on specifically, how do we infuse arts education back into the curriculum from K through twelve? So if, if any board member or if any committee, whether it be from school support to the Superintendent Office, if you're willing to have some offline conversations, I'm willing to help you guys fundraise and bridge the gap for the Creative Arts High School.
Thank you. At this time, I will turn the meeting back over to Superintendent McCombs to address any questions or comments.
Thank you and thank you, everyone, for your comments. Took a lot of notes during this meeting and will get to provide some responses, but some of them will not be immediate, but I do want to let you know that we took the time to take down what was shared, the concerns, and also to think about some solutions as we're moving forward, which may not be shared here because we have to go back and make sure they're fully baked. But your concerns, your voices, sharing the information that you did share is extremely important. And so before I open it up to board members by turning it over to our Board President, I do want to take the opportunity just to address a few, address a few of the issues that did come up. So I want to thank, thank you, Ms. Kane, for your comments and we would like to share that our staff members, I'm not sure if you're still here, but we do want to share, yes, that our staff members do receive required training annually on child abuse, sexual harassment and affirmative action, but this is not to say we will not continue to add additional trainings as well as we are going to explore our policies in those areas. Our young learners are receiving ongoing workshops with the New Jersey Child Assault Prevention Program or New Jersey CAP and can receive Tier Three intervention support from NJ4S and daily support from our school-based youth services team. Also, within the health curriculum, there are age-appropriate lessons on sexual assault. However, we will continue to focus on keeping all of our students safe and we know that we cannot do enough to make sure that that is the case. Additionally, a newly implemented, all school leaders have been trained on utilizing the HelpMe, H-E-L-P-M-E, platform, which is used for anonymous reporting. During back-to-school night, the district also launched the HelpMe app that allows students and staff to connect directly to trained crisis counselors from the HelpLine app. I'm, I'm sorry, from the HelpMe app. The Crisis Text Line provides free, twenty-four-seven, high-quality, anonymous, text-based mental health support and crisis intervention volunteers to support people in their moments of need. Using GetHelp, students, parents and staff can directly connect with school and local-based resources as well and ask for assistance during. resources as well and ask for assistance during StopIt's reporting system. Some things that are encouraged to be reported are domestic violence, mental health needs, bullying, anxiety, as well as everyday needs such as food, transportation, clothing, shelter, or medical needs. You will see posters throughout our schools and information explaining the app will be, is sent home already, but we'll also make sure that it is on our social media platform and more prominently on our district webpage, so it's easy for parents as well to access. So thank you, and we will continue to look for other platforms that will help to make it safe for students to anonymously share and also to get support. Thank you also for your concerns you shared around our student dress code policy. We'll take a look and revisit that. The length of the scourge that you discussed is not a part of our policy, but we do know that we have to circle back and make sure that we're getting that buy-in from our students and families to follow the dress code that does exist because we don't want to create chronic absenteeism. So we get a balanced view, and we will work together to find a solution that makes sense. Thank you for those individuals who came from Parents Invincible. Josie, after April, we return to our traditional public comment format, which requires attendees to be in person to provide public comment. However, our solution center, our Parent Solution Center, is always available to address concerns as they come up in real time, and they can be reached at 856-966-2507. To Ms. Gonzalez, thank you for offering your support. We welcome it. We agree that it will always take the whole village to raise a child, and what you provided or shared with us is the spirit in which we want to continue to move forward collaboratively with our families. Ms. Barelli-Luke, thank you for sharing. I jotted down a few additional comments, but thank you for sharing your comments. We will make the change regarding the Caddo School Address to the old Caddo Address. It was a mistake and an error, so thank you. It should have been listed as 2930 Saunders Street. We will also investigate your other comments and concerns and take appropriate actions if necessary, and please know that we also, as a district, are excited that we are almost there with the settling of the contract, and we look forward to that being resolved in the very near future. Mr. Delgado, thank you for remaining, the multilingual, and for the comments that you provided for us. The multilingual learners are provided with instructional resources that are aligned to the state standards and meet their linguistic needs in both native language, Spanish and English. The curriculum team continues to work collaboratively to ensure that all students have access to equitable instructional resources to meet the rigorous standards and the various needs of our multilingual learners. We will continue to work with our school leadership team, our central office staff, to make sure that all of that is getting to each of our students as necessary. Excuse me for one moment. So you did raise some questions, Mr. Delgado, with regard to your recent open request. I know for certain that we have the materials that you discussed, so we're going to go back to see why you didn't get the full materials, but I just did a quick sidebar, but we'll make sure that we follow up accordingly in the appropriate way for communication, but a certificate of occupancy, the fire department, all of the electrical. It's escaping. Inspections, thank you. Inspections have been, had been completed before our students moved in, but we will make sure that you have that information. Thank you very much. And I can assure you, the SDA, the Schools Development Authority, also came down and was a part of the process, as well as the Camden County Improvement Authority and the county, walking through weekly just to make sure that we passed all of our inspections. So again, we will make sure that you get the information as requested through the Open Public Records Act. Ms. Falcon, thank you for sharing your experiences. Falcon or Falcon, I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing it wrong. Thank you for expressing and sharing your experiences and offering your support. We will continue to examine our AP classes and research data and opportunities. We do not want all of our students to, we do, we do want our students to earn those threes and fours and be able to earn college credit. That is a share, and it's not something that we're just going to want, but we're going to go forward in a goal-oriented way to make sure that it does happen. Thank you for the comments that were shared. Ms. Devine, I'm not sure if you're still here, but thank you for being an active parent in your school's Parent Advisory Council and for sharing your concerns. The state limit for 4th grade, this was with regard to Forest Hill, the state limit for 4th and 5th grade classrooms is 23. The classes are within the state guidelines. The current 4th grade allocation was for two classrooms. The two teachers assigned, Ms. Anderson and Ms. Guzik, are currently still there. Please speak to your school's FOC, Ms. Tracy Allen, or school leadership, to help connect you with the teachers. There was also a scheduled meet and greet during back-to-school night. We are also currently monitoring student enrollment at Forest Hill, but just want to make sure that you get your concerns addressed, and if you do not, please feel free to reach out to the Parents, the District Parent Solution Center. Ms. Dickerson, she's still here? I have my glasses on. I hear you, but I don't see you. It's okay, the lights are bright. So Ms. Dickerson, thank you for your questions and for your concern. Thank you for your questions. There you are. I see you. I see you standing. I thought you were still over here where you were. For your concerns and your questions, we will definitely be looking into, and for everyone who had the concerns about scheduling, not just at Creative Arts, but at the Camden High Campus, I know Ms. Fussell brought it up as well. Again, I think you heard my comments earlier. We're going to look into seeing what we can do to be solutions-oriented in that area. Thank you for your questions with regard to, I think, yes, you asked a question, my notes said you wanted to know about the new SBA, if they were, hold on, glasses. Did you say the new SBA?
BA.
BA, the new.
Yes.
You said BA, right? The School Business Administrator. I'm sorry. Yes. Ms. Taylor did, I'm sorry. Okay, Ms. Taylor, the new School Business Administrator, Ms. Taylor, did go through the complete interview process and all of the necessary steps that were necessary in order to make sure that she was qualified to serve as our district's School Business Administrator. The transition, we have had a lot of transition in the area of our School Business Administrator role, quite a few, and so we are excited that we have someone in the role who will serve as a permanent. Our most recent SBA was Ms. Peg McDowell, who's here this evening, who served as our interim. She served as our interim before and has been really the glue holding things together as we move forward, which is why we are still able to have three, only three audit findings and have done a tremendous job with CUSAC. I want to address CUSAC as well. As soon as we receive our scores from the state, we will be able to share a presentation as to where we are now. We did a full, we were CUSAC-ed or had a full CUSAC review in the spring of last year. We have yet to receive those scores. Once they go to the state boards, then they come to us, so then we will definitely share as we typically do. When it comes to, Ms. Fussell, thank you so much for sharing your experiences and for your beautiful daughter, sharing her with us as a school board rep as well, and for your vantage point as a school food service, nutrition services worker at the campus. We will take what you shared into consideration, looking at the climate and the quality of what is happening in our lunch, especially with Camden High and our parent.
Back over into the hands of the Superintendent.
Thank you so much. And before I just read the approval statement to move the business forward, I do want to make sure that I go on the record and also say that I'm greatly appreciative for the leadership of Mr. Nelson, who served as our Acting President from January all the way up until last month's board meeting, who, from that time, he and Ms. Gillespie, who stepped up as the Vice President, made sure that the business of the Board was moving. Truth is true, and so I have to speak it. Made sure that everything was moving, made sure that they held whatever was needed to be held accountable. They visited schools, they walked through, they had questions, they asked questions, they communicated with Board members. So I want to thank you, Mr. Nelson, and thank Ms. Gillespie in her absence. I have already thanked you in private. I've already done what I need to do, but in public. As we move forward toward healing, it is important also to make sure that that's grounded in truth. So I just wanted to make sure that I said that publicly. Congratulations to Jeanette for stepping into this new role, and as we move forward and turn the page, I can't wait to see, we already know we have so much work to do. Hey, just from this one meeting, we know that there are so many areas, but it's okay because our students are worth each and every last moment, each and every conversation, each and every question, so that they know that we care and value them. So I want to thank you. And so at this time, as we move forward to closure, in accordance with the powers vested in the state district superintendent under Title 18A, I hereby approve today's Superintendent's agenda, the items and business office items. Turn it back to our Board Secretary to adjourn.
Thank you, Superintendent McCombs. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Thank you. Board Member Perez and Board Member Garcia. Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Consider yourself adjourned.